Silence followed by the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mrs. Garza, would you please call the roll?
Yes, ma'am. Chair Seberg.
Here.
Vice Chair Stevens.
Here.
Mrs. Williams.
Here.
Mr. Hollingsworth.
Here.
Mrs. Brooks.
Here.
Mrs. Paul.
Here.
And Mrs. Presia.
Here.
We have a quorum present.
Thank you. Dr. Casada, are there any additions or deletions to the agenda this evening?
No, ma'am.
Thank you. And can I get a motion for approval of the public meeting agenda?
Chair, I move that the school board of the city of Manassas approve the public meeting agenda as presented.
Second.
I have a motion by Vice Chair Stevens, seconded by Mrs. Brooks, that the school board of the city of Manassas approve the public meeting agenda as presented. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries seven zero. We will continue on with our agenda. Superintendent's announcements and spotlights are superintendented here this evening. Ms. Radford, do you want to introduce? Thank you.
Chair Seberg, there we go, all right. I am here tonight, good evening to all other members of the board and good evening to our public tonight that have joined us. I am excited to share some new updates to our Manassas City Public Schools family tonight. We're here to introduce several staff members who are either new to the MCPS family or now serving in a new capacity. So I'm going to call their names and just ask them to come up front and wave to the people so we can all see who they are. So at the central office, we are pleased to welcome Mr. Taft Kelly III to MCPS as our new Director of Finance. Mr. Kelly spent the last nine years in Prince William County Schools, having served as the supervisor of accounting there before coming to MCPS, so we welcome him to our family. Near the end of last school year, Juliette Finnegan was named principal of Metz Middle School. Tonight, join me in welcoming Ms. Dakota Jackson as the new principal of Baldwin Intermediate School. Last year, Ms. Jackson played a pivotal role as a collaborator in the MCPS mentoring and professional growth supports program, or MAPS, where her duties included coaching and mentoring teachers within the division. She also served as the integrated honors research teacher at Metz Middle School, and we officially welcome her to our family. I'd also like to introduce our new assistant principals at Metz Middle School. First, we have Kim Jones. Ms. Jones has been with MCPS for two years and served as a reading support teacher at Baldwin Intermediate. I would like to note that she was also the division's 2024 Mary V. B. Guevaris Teacher of the Year, so thank you for being here tonight, too. We have another assistant principal at Metz, Mr. Josh Miller. Mr. Miller is new to MCPS, and he joins us from Faukeer County, so we welcome him to the city. We'd also like to welcome Shanae Ivory Brown as an assistant principal at Metz. Is she here tonight? Okay. Ms. Brown joins the MCPS in Mustang family from Loudoun County Public Schools, so when you see her, please give her a big welcome. Additionally, we have a new Director of School Counseling at Metz, Mr. Harry Wolin is here. Mr. Wolin comes to Manassas City Public Schools from Fairfax County Public Schools, and so we welcome him tonight. We're also happy to welcome Pam Perkins as the new she is the new assistant principal at Weems Elementary. Ms. Perkins previously served as an instructional facilitator at Baldwin Elementary for the last two years, so she's not new to MCPS, but definitely new to this role. We also have one person who cannot be with us tonight, and that is Ms. Cherish Skinker, who has served as the on-time graduation coordinator at Osborne, and she will be a familiar face with students and families as she assumes her new role as assistant principal this year. So we congratulate her in her absence and look forward to working with all of you. I've had the privilege of seeing them this week at central office as they've been going through training and getting familiar with operations here, but we're excited to have each of you as a part of the MCPS family and look forward to working with you. Thank you.
Thank you, and welcome to each and every one of you. All right, we have no committee reports tonight, so I'm going to move along to citizens' comments. Do we have any citizens lined up? Okay. Does anybody wish to speak on citizens' comments? Can I get a motion for the consent agenda, please?
Chair, I move that the school board of the city of Manassas approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
I have a motion by Vice Chair Stevens, seconded by Mr. Hollingsworth, that the school board of the city of Manassas approve the consent agenda as presented. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries seven zero. Moving right along. Tonight, on the discussion agenda, finance and operations. Mr. Russ Helton is here with us this evening, Director of Facilities and Maintenance, and will provide summer project updates. Thank you, sir.
Good evening. Chair Seberg, Vice Chair Stevens, Dr. Casada, members of the board. My name is Russ Helton. I'm the Director of Facilities and Maintenance. Tonight, I'd like to present a list of summer projects. But before I unpack the before I unpack the list of projects, I would like to take a moment and just describe the appreciation that facilities and maintenance has with all of the departments with Manassas City Schools. Teamwork makes the dream work, and I'm not saying this as an understatement. There are departments within the city of Manassas, they're exceptional people, and they all chip in and work together, so I'm really proud to be part of this division. And this list is an effort that should go across the division because there's a lot of hands that go into making a project happen around here. So saying that, as you see before you, you have the division list of projects unpacked. Osborne High School has fire alarm, phase one of roofing, HVAC pumps, HVAC boilers, HVAC expansion tanks. We did a modification of classroom 1210. We also modified the conference room in the main office, and we did some flooring in the main office. Moving on to Metz Middle School, we have some hallway paint, hallway lighting. We refinished the main gym floor. I'm very excited for you to see a picture of that tonight. There's an auxiliary gym divider curtain that we installed. Hard surface play area repair, that would be the basketball courts if you need to familiarize yourself with the campus, and then you will eventually see a stadium scoreboard. Right now, the contractors are working on semitals and pool imperments with the city of Manassas as we speak. Moving on to Mayfield Intermediate, we have HVAC boilers, HVAC expansion tanks, a kitchen floor repair. At Baldwin Elementary and Intermediate School, we have classroom paint, hard surface play area repair, flagpole reset. At Dean Elementary, we have concrete. At Hayden Elementary, we have concrete and a walk-in freezer door repair. At Roundland Elementary, we have a HVAC rooftop unit for the office area. We have a hard surface play area repair and concrete. What we have before you is a set of pictures for some of the projects that we have at Osborne High School. Some noteworthy projects, as you see in the top left corner, you have the fire alarm panels. On the top right corner, we have some boilers that were replaced. Those boilers serve the two-story academic wing and basically all of the sections that were replaced in the 98 renovation. We had some HVAC pumps in both our 1984 mechanical room as well as the 98 section. And as you see, the pile of debris, that is part of our phase one roof project, and that goes over the auditorium area. If anybody had any questions about that. Metz Middle School, we have a gym floor refinished. This is where we completely resanded and repainted the gym floor. Very excited on how that turned out. And then we mentioned the hallway lighting and the hallway paint. You won't see any paint on the walls in the picture, but that's an example of some of the lighting that's going in the hallways, and we're trying to increase the aluminums to make it not look as dim as it has in the past. Let's see, here's some more pictures of Baldwin Elementary's paint. You can see how the contractor prepped the area, and we're excited about those areas to get some refreshed colors. At Hayden Elementary School, we have concrete is the big job, and as you can see, a before-and-after set of photos. And that concludes the presentation of summer list of projects. I stand before you to answer any questions or have any comments.
Any questions or comments from the board? Mrs. Paul?
I just want to say I've had the opportunity to work with Mr. Helton a number of times this past school year, and what a pleasure it is to always have an interaction with him whenever I see his name on an agenda. I know that the project's going to come in on time, on budget, and with a smile, and I really appreciate his attitude and all of his staff that he works with. Thank you.
Anyone else? Mrs. Presia?
I just had a quick question. That was me. Flagpole reset, what does that mean?
So at Baldwin Elementary, we had some crooked flagpoles, and there was a member of the staff, he's on leave right now, his name's Steve Potts, and he is a firm believer that the flag should be up and waved, and when the poles were crooked, it was pointed out, and we found a quick fix, so we added that on to the summer project list. They were re-sleeved, and they were straight and flying both of our flags.
Well, I'm with Mr. Potts. I'm all for our flag flying high and straight, so thank you so much for that. And yeah, thank you for taking care of these things. You know, HVAC units and all this kind of stuff are not yeah, they're kind of tucked away, they're in the back closet and stuff like that, and I just appreciate the chance for you to showcase the work that you and your team have done, and especially the pictures, I love the pictures, so thank you.
Mrs. Brooks?
I want to add that I echo their feelings. Thank you for all that you guys do to work so hard to keep our schools looking good, but also doing it for the best, you know, possible budget and timing.
Thank you, Mr. Helton. It's a busy summer you've had there.
Yes, ma'am.
Thanks. Next up on our agenda, under finance and operations, is our FY '25 amended budget. Dr. Jennifer Casada will join us up front. She's the Executive Director of Accountability and Finance, and she'll provide an update on the FY '25 amended budget for discussion.
I'm a little shorter than Mr. Helton. Can you all hear me?
No. Can you hear me? Yeah. Okay, great.
Okay. Good evening, Chair Seberg, Vice Chair Stevens, members of the school board. It's my privilege tonight to present our amended budget. I don't see it. There we go. Okay. So we did this before. You approved a budget for FY '25 back in March, but we needed to make an amendment, and the good news, it's because there's more money. So the Virginia Code, of course, mandates that we have a balanced budget every year, and the budget includes an estimate of what we think is necessary for the next fiscal year. As you know, you approved the budget back in March, and the budget was then presented to the city council in April and approved as part of the city budget. Changes to the Virginia budget necessitate an amendment to our FY '25 budget. This resulted, back just as way of history, the governor's proposed budget was unveiled way back in December, and the House and Senate reconciled budget was released in March, but these things did not match. When we presented our budget to you in March, it was based on the governor's budget from December. That's because that's what we had at the time. So the Governor and General Assembly luckily agreed on a new budget in May, which includes additional funding compared to the budget in December, which is nice. The new budget does, however, have some additional requirements, one of which is a local match for a 3% raise, which was not in the governor's budget, but good news, it was already included in our budget as part of the 6% raise for all employees. It also includes new staffing ratios for teachers for English learners, which requires additional positions for MCPS, and I'll talk about those in just a moment. So on this next slide, I'm going to just talk through how this additional money, which equates to $3.27 million, how that's going to be expended. That's how we're proposing that you approve to be expended. The numbers you see here are additions to the budget. They are not the total amount in those categories, there's addition to the budget. So the first line talks about position changes and salary benefit adjustments. These are based to make sure there's that continued staff members being caught up that were identified, as well as any changes due to enrollment because of increased kindergarten enrollment in some of our schools, which necessitates more teachers, and kindergarten necessitates more teacher assistance. Those are just some of the examples of the changes that are part of that number. The biggest number that you see here is those L-teacher adjustments. And so per version of requirements, the ratios change from being uniform across all levels for English learners to be like 1 to 20 for our Level Ones and so on and so forth moving up, which again necessitates more teachers. The way we're tackling this in FY '25 is to give each of our schools an additional ESOL teacher. So each of our elementary schools will get one more teacher, and then each of our secondary schools, starting with intermediate, will get two. This was based on an analysis of where the caseloads fell and was part of a long-term plan that Mr. Emel and his team had been looking at, but now we have funding to do so. So these positions would be advertised and hopefully hired. The trick is, right, we're part of a nationwide teacher shortage, so it may take time to fill all of these, but we are required by the state of Virginia to be expending earmarking this money that way. But so are a lot of other school divisions, you know, needing more more staff, so this will be we're hoping, any ESOL teachers sitting out there, please come to Manassas City. We would love to have you. So the next line is in addition to our All-In Virginia spending to meet the requirements related to that. You'll see the playground line on here for $60,000. This is part of an ongoing partnership between the schools and the Parks Department of the city, and this is to make sure that our part of that partnership is funded, and this allows for updates to playgrounds on an annual basis that get identified, and Mr. Helton and his team work with the city to make that happen. The next line you see is something called Hop Skip Drive. That's an interesting name. That's the name for a vendor for specialized transportation for our students either receiving transportation to out-of-district placements for some of our special needs students and/or our students who are experiencing homelessness, who need to be transported from places that are off of the typical bus route. So this is in addition to the money that had been in the budget based on trends from last year and this year. Those expenses were higher than what had been budgeted. We are optimistic that we're excited about a partnership with this new vendor compared to the vendor we've been using. They've worked with a lot of school divisions around here, and we're hopeful that this is going to be a strong partnership, and it allows our students, right, to access, continue to access schooling even when life circumstances are more challenging. Based on an analysis of the last five years of our legal expenses, we decided it made sense with this money to increase the legal services budget by a little amount. That's not the total, again, budget for legal services, that's just the increase. The next line item is Power School Unified Insights. This is part of our Power School, which is our student information system for folks who don't know. But what this tool will allow us to do is have more on-demand data dashboards and at the fingertips of our principals, assistant principals, and folks in the schools in a lot of areas, not just performance, but behavior and discipline. And so this includes the one-time setup and training fee, and then on an ongoing basis, the cost for this year after year will be significantly less. The next line item is security positions. So we are moving away from our contract where we did purchase services for this at the high school in addition to positions we had and making those positions be local. And so this is the net change when we zero out the purchase services in this area and add in the positions. The next item is changes to bus driver and bus attendant contracts to make their contract day represent what they're actually working and have uniformity for our staff so that it helps us retain them when they have a full-scheduled day. And then it will, some of this may end up being offset by some of the reductions in the overtime and extra hourly pay that has already been expended on their behalf. The next item is an addition of a floater custodian to support the facilities staff in our schools when needed. This has been something that's been in the pipeline and requested in the past, and this money allows us to do that. And then finally, we're in a world where AI is a part of our everyday lives, and there's been a committee formed to look at AI and how we deal with that in the classrooms, and one of the recommendations was to get some detection software that will help teachers in their work, and so this is the estimate for that purchase of that software. And then you see reserve. So the remaining, because we have to have a balanced budget, the remaining amount that's there is earmarked for additional staffing needs that may arise due to enrollment changes, or if we need a different, another ESOL teacher, for example, that money is earmarked for that, so not to be spent on things, but would be spent on people or staffing needs as the year goes on. So then you see that's a total increase to the expenditures, which matches the total revenue, hence balanced. Next steps would be for you to approve this budget amendment on July 23rd, and then the city council would need to approve it. Hopefully, that would occur in September. I did speak with the finance director from the city today, and this might be rolled into an amendment that they're already going to be doing related to bond sales, and so we'll be working together to make that happen. So, thank you.
Wonderful. Any questions or comments for Dr. Casada? Vice Chair Stevens?
Dr. Casada, thank you for your presentation on this. Question for you, what is All-In Virginia?
Okay, so none of our instruction folks are there. So All-In Virginia is a three-pronged approach from the governor and VDOE that to focus on literacy and attendance and other things. And so it functions in some ways like a grant, but it's not a grant because it's money that's in our operating fund. However, we're shifting around when the money would be spent. So we spent money on the textbooks, all of the new benchmark advanced instructional materials for language arts. That money was spent out of All-In Virginia funds that become part of our operating fund, and so this would be to use an additional amount of money this year to cover the expenses that relate to that, as well as the implementation of the Virginia Literacy Act, which comes with lots of strings. I can get more details about exactly how that would be played out from our literacy folks. We can get that for you.
Thank you. And then legal services. The changes for legal services don't reflect anything new taking place. We always have legal services, and we use them on a regular basis for some very mundane things. So someone seeing this line that says legal services shouldn't be concerned that there is something on the horizon. This is just part of what we do as a school division.
Yes, absolutely. So, and it also, I'm glad that you asked. This gives me the opportunity to explain like these increases, right? We looked back at the last five years of expenses. We want our budget to represent accurately where we're spending our money, right? So we've been spending, in some cases, more money on legal services, often for mundane things, as you see, as you say, but rather than having to reallocate funds someplace else, we would like the budget line to more closely match what we anticipate. So we did a five-year average of legal expenses and looked and figured that this might be an amount that might bring it so that what we spend matches what we've budgeted, right? Again, there may be things that come up that we don't know, but we're trying to make things tell the correct story.
So basically, it's that the spending we are doing is more in line with what we've allocated.
Correct.
And that's based on the average of five years.
Yes, so it's actually the reverse, right? That the allocation would match the historical spending, and so we just thought that it made sense to add a little bit.
No, I agree, I agree. Those were my only two questions. The security positions, we're moving from outside contracted services to our own security people that we'll be hiring, who will be Manassas City Public School employees.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, and they will get all the same benefits as
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
And these costs, those costs, as well as for anything that's related to salaries, includes the benefit costs with those. And for the ESOL positions, it also includes the cost of a computer and things like that. So that's because Lee Miller is fantastic and does all that math.
And the new ESOL positions, those are related to legislation that was just enacted, that's actually going to be policy discussion. Because there is, it talks about the new allocations of ESOL teachers, and so that rolls into the whole policy conversation. So thank you.
Mrs. Presia, do you have a question?
Yes, thank you. So Vice Chair Stevens asked half of them, so thank you for that. But I do have some additional ones I want to zoom in on. The AI detection software, I'm obviously completely supportive of investing in that. My one, and you might not be equipped to answer this today, but my one concern about making a static purchase is that the ChatGPT is constantly releasing new versions. So is the software we are getting also a dynamic, you know, will it be keeping up with?
So that's a great question, Ms. Presia, and that would be something that we're looking at. There hasn't been a specific one identified yet. We put in an amount based on some initial research. So, you know, Joshua Makley and our procurement folks would be working with Dr. Stevenson and the instruction folks to look at all of that with those very questions in mind, right? To find something that would be, often, software has like renewable licenses, and that would include upgrades to address any of the changes in ChatGPT, et cetera. So those are very much things that they're looking at before they make a decision. But this is allowing us to have the money allocated to purchase it once we find one that meets our needs.
All right, that's great, thank you. I also wanted to zoom in a little bit on Power School Unified Insights
Yes, ma'am.
because I also think that this is exciting. You previewed a little bit. Power School is our student information center. Students use it to track their own grades, parents use it to access report cards. What else is it used for currently, and what does this expansion do?
So Power School is our official student record, right? So our student information, anything from attendance to performance to state details. So we use it as the record when we report data to the state. So when we do our official state reporting, everything comes out of Power School. What this is going to allow us to do is use more on the backend here so that our end users here will have to do less digging and finding reports. It's going to pull things together for them. So in some ways, it's its own kind of AI, but in the way that it's like BI, business intelligence layer, really, that will allow, it does some of the work for you to be able to see things at a glance without having to pull a report and put things together. And so when we talk about things like MTSS and tiered systems of support, there's frameworks for some of that. So this year's cost will include the building of it in there and some training, and then in the future, it would just be like less than half of that cost to maintain that add-on to Power School. Does that answer your question? Okay.
Yes, I wanted to, I wanted to give a chance to expand on that a little bit because not everybody watching has interacted with, you know, back when I went to school, the report card came in a piece of paper in the mail, you know what I mean? So it's, I just wanted more detail on that. The EL positions, I just wanted to double-check. You did say this, but I want to make sure it's on the record that these positions are being allocated based on the need that we're seeing in the division because not all of our schools have the same level of EL need.
So, and so we, it's based on that as well as the requirements, right, from VDOE? And so we figured there were enough, when we look at the new staffing ratios and the Level One and whatever, that each school would require at least one, but it was really at our secondary schools where we were going to need the addition. So it was based on the recommendations from the ESOL team, looking at the information they had. And again, this may not even get us, we have two years to get to where the state says everyone has to be, so this gets us partway there and allows us to see, and we will analyze for the future budget for FY '26 where we think the next level of need is.
Great, so anybody out there who's thinking about getting their EL endorsement, now's the time.
Absolutely.
Did you have a question, Mrs. Paul?
Nope.
Okay, no further questions? Thank you, Dr. Casada, for wearing many hats tonight. We appreciate you. Our next item on the agenda is policies. And I believe that Vice Chair Lisa Stevens, who is also our policy chair, will present the revised, added, and retired policies by the Virginia School Board Association for May 2024. The grading policy will also be discussed.
Yes. So the policy committee meeting has met several times in the past few months to look at the SBA recommendations for policy updates, some potential policy changes, policy deletions. These are all policies that have been updated, changed, deleted based on legislation that passed in the Virginia General Assembly this past legislative session. There are several new policies that are related to the Virginia Literacy Act. I believe there are six or seven new policies related to the Virginia Literacy Act. There are some policies that have been deleted because Virginia law or the Code of Virginia no longer requires them. And we do have a few policies where our policies were modified from the SBA recommendations to better fit our school division, but now with the updates from the SBA are now regulation SBA policies and are no longer modifications. We can talk about those policies in general, and then we'll go into discussion on the grading policy and proposed grading policy changes. Did anyone grading policy and proposed grading policy changes. Did anyone have any questions on the bulk of the policies from the June 25th and May 5th meetings?
No questions.
Okay. The next thing we're going to discuss, and I think this is what everyone has been waiting for, is the grading policy. Let me just pull this up. So, "The discussion around the grading policy has been ongoing since approximately this time last year. There have been questions, concerns, and opinions shared in relation to anything and everything having to do with grading. Several issues, thoughts have been at the forefront of the argument to revert back to the former MCS, MCPS policy or one similar to it. In order to address some of the questions, I took a deep dive into everything related to grading policy. And I'm hoping to try to answer the majority of questions here. The first question that I've come across regularly is that no other school divisions are implementing grading policies similar to ours. Fairfax County just implemented their new grading policy that will be effective the 24, 25 school year that's very similar to ours, uses several of the same metrics. As we know, Fairfax County is the largest school division in the state. The second concern that was raised is that there is no data to support the implementation of a grading policy like ours, that are the, all the arguments are philosophical in nature. This is not quite accurate. Several researchers and public education specialists have devoted their careers to the study and implementation of a variety of different grading policies. They've conducted research, completed meta-analyses of other researches, other research, excuse me, implemented innovative grading policies in their school divisions, worked closely with administrators and teachers in not just US schools, not just US schools, public, private, and charter, but have also worked in school divisions abroad. I can share some of the background information on several of these specialists. One of them, and his name is, I have a lot of pieces of paper going on. His name is Dr. Thomas Guske. I came around, across his research just recently, and his research, I have to pull it out, forgive me that I have so many different things going on here. His research was "A Century of Grading Research: Meaning and Value in the Most Common Educational Measure." For this study, it was two, four, six, eight, eight different researchers went through 100 years of research and information on grading policies to do an analysis on them to identify what is most important, what impacts grading the most. I just came across that one yesterday. I've come across several books by experts. I'll share the information on a couple of those experts for you. We've got Joe Feldman, who's worked in education at the local and national levels for over 20 years in both charter and district school context. And as a teacher, principal, and district administrator, he began his career as a high school English and American history teacher in Atlanta Public Schools, and was the founding principal of a charter high school in Washington DC. He's been the director of charter schools for New York City Department of Education, director of K-12 instruction in Union City, California, excuse me, and was a fellow to the chief of staff of the US Secretary of Education, Richard Riley. We have Kathy Vattertot, and I hope I'm saying her name correctly. Dr. Kathy Vattertot is a professor of education at the University of Missouri St. Louis. She's a former middle school and high school teacher and middle school principal. She's the author of numerous articles about education and three books. She's presented, and she actually is an expert on homework. I didn't know that you could be that specific. She's presented her research, her homework research, to about 12,000 educators and parents in the United States, Canada, and Europe. She's considered an international expert on the topic of K-12 homework, and has been interviewed by media such as The New York Times, National Public Radio, Time, USA Today, BBC, World News, The Globe, and Mail, and The Guardian. We also have, who I just mentioned, Dr. Thomas Arguske, professor emeritus in the College of Education at the University of Kentucky, where he's served as department chair, head of the Educational Psychology Area Committee, is a visiting professor at 10 other universities in the US, a visiting scholar at universities in Australia, Canada, and New Zealand. He began his career as a middle school teacher, earned his doctorate at the University of Chicago, served as an administrator in Chicago Public Schools before he became the director of the Center for the Improvement of Teaching and Learning, a national research center. He is the author and/or editor of 25 award-winning books, 250 chapters, articles, and professional papers on education measurement, evaluation, assessment, and grading. So, we do have experts who's devoted their time and energy to the subject of grading. Several of them have done research, but they also speak to real-world experience in implementing grading policies in different kinds of school divisions, not just public schools. The third concern is that a grading policy such as ours waters down the curriculum and reduces rigor. That concern is addressed in Kathy Vattertot's book, which is this one, called Rethinking Grading. And it's based on a flawed theory that the amount of work done is what creates the rigor, not the complexity or challenge of the work. It's also based on a second flawed theory, and let me go to that second flawed theory. So, the second flawed theory is that we believe a rigorous educational system, success should be scarce. Scarcity of high grades equaled rigor, and only in a few should be winners. If we set the standard for excellence so high that only a few students excelled and many failed, then we must have very high standards. Then, of course, the inverse must be true. Lots of high grades must indicate lower standards and water down curriculum. However, the reality is just a little bit different. Let me go to my next page. The reality is that we believe the amount of time we gave students to learn was adequate, and therefore, it was appropriate to test all students one time at the same amount of time and record grades as permanent. We understand that different students require different paths and varying amounts of time to learn, each ideally to reach the same end. Standards-based learning is not linear. Groups of students branch off in different directions based on their learning. Instead of teaching, tests, and moving in one large group, learning is a series of masteries for individual students. Teach, check for understanding, apply learning, get feedback, revise learning, get more feedback until mastery is achieved, which should allow all students the same level of success, not just a chosen few. The fourth concern is that students need to be assessed penalties for late work, because without them, work would never be turned in on time. This, however, is also inaccurate. When we look at Ken O'Connor's book, sorry, I have to go to the pages, he says, "Many teachers believe that they need a policy with penalties to attempt to ensure that students turn and work on time so the teacher can maintain the pace of instruction necessary to meet tighter curriculum requirements. Many also use penalties because they believe it communicates fairness to students. There are, however, at least four problems with this practice. First, and most damaging, they distort the grade's representation of the student's true achievement. That is, their progress towards mastery of a learning goal or a learning target. Second, they motivate exactly the opposite behavior than that intended. At some point in the grade reduction scenario, accumulating penalties leads students to conclude that it no longer makes sense to do that work. Third, and this is in Ken O'Connor's own words, third, my class, not my classroom, his classroom, "Third, my classroom teaching experience and anecdotal evidence from many teachers leads me to conclude that penalties don't work, because they do not change behavior. The same student who is late with required evidence in Week Two is frequently late in Weeks 18 and 36. Fourth, having absolute deadlines and penalties for everything does not prepare students for the world beyond school. In the real world, timelines are frequently negotiated. Real estate, legal matters, or adjusted due to circumstances, contractors and consultants. Deadlines range from fixed to considerably flexible." The next concern relates to students being allowed to retake assessments regardless of the original grade they received. The first argument is that the teach-test-and-move-on approach doesn't support mastery of the curriculum. What I just quoted just a few minutes ago talked about how we need to reassess students. If first we test a student and they don't show mastery, we need to reteach. We simply cannot just move on because we're leaving that student behind. We've got to reteach to ensure that that student has mastery, because they're going to need mastery of whatever concept they're learning to move on to the next concept, which often builds on the first concept that was being taught. When this policy was being drafted and discussed in its original iteration, there was a lot of discussion around it. At our last two policy committee meetings, I believe it was, we discussed the policy additionally. Dr. Casada, Dr. Stevenson, and Mr. Cuffeler, and Dr. Newman got together to look at it and make sure it was a tighter, stronger policy that explained things in much greater detail.
Ms. Garzett, can we pull up the policy?
Thank you. Can you enlarge it? Now, Dr. Casada, would you like to speak to some of the changes or updates on the policy?
Okay. Okay. So, all of the changes are on page three, because the conversations had been around assignments, assessments, and final grades. And so, in the first set of bullets, based on conversation, I believe that happened at both the May and June Policy Committee, there was conversation about requiring something of students before they could do a reattempt of an assignment or an assessment. And so, this gets at that teachers can require some type of remediation activity for students being, before they're allowed to reattempt or reassess. And then, then it talks about that students can earn full credit on reattempts, and the greater of two scores would be included in the quarter grade. And then, the next change is in the second big bullet, which is about when, when, when assessments or assignments could be, original assessments or assignments to be completed, they'd need to be submitted no later than one week prior to the end of the quarter that it was assigned. And this came in response to conversations or concerns about teachers not having time to catch up with the grading for all of those. And so, assignments that were assigned at the beginning of the quarter, and instead of being turned in all the way to the end of the quarter, there would be a week built in for that. That was the logic there. The next bullet stresses that the A to F, the equal banding for each of the letter grades, but is, is general to allow for, currently, that would be 100 to 50. That's the way that it's been. It's just articulating that. And then, the next section gets into discussion about the weighting. This is something that concerns had been raised about in terms of the inconsistency and the wide ranges for the weighting that had been allowed. And so it describes both how the weights would have to get to, it narrows things down a little bit, as well as how the weights must add up to 100%. And I want to call your attention to that principals must approve the weighted formulas for their department and grade-level teams prior to the start of the class, and that those weighting formulas must be communicated in advance and in writing to students and families. So then you see the difference in the weightings. And then the last thing, for clarity, was something that came up, I think, in the first meeting I was part of about this back in last summer, about how course grades for high school, there was inconsistency in some being an average of quarters and some being an average of semesters, and so to state that it's the average of the two semester grades. So those are the, the big picture changes, so.
Thank you. Thank you. Questions?
Because I know we'll have a lot. All right. Thank you, Mrs. Chair. All right. First, two clarification questions. From the old policy, we removed a student in high school, a credit-bearing course may choose to take a pass or fail final grade in lieu of a final course, a percentage grade. If the student chooses to do that, it has to be approved by the parent, and it does not impact their GPA. We removed that totally. Can you share with me the reasoning behind that?
Absolutely. And sorry, I forgot to mention that before. That was removed because that piece was added when, as part, when this policy was adopted, it was during the COVID time. And so, right now, if there are courses that are pass/fail, they're identified ahead of time. That was put in when the world got upended, and so it was an opportunity for if students were in a class that has a grade, to make a decision to change that class to pass/fail. And so, the recommendation was to take that out, since that now you could have a class that's identified as pass/fail, but it would be identified at the outset. And so, students who were in a class for a grade would have that grade in the class.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
Yes. So it still exists. It's just ahead.
The possibility of a pass/fail course exists, but it would be determined upfront, not in the middle of the year.
Okay. Because our surrounding school districts still do that. So I just want to curious as to the reasoning. Okay? I understand that. And just another clarification, we removed classwork. So I am making the assumption, and I just want to clarify it here, that major assignments, comma, assignments, and you give a, can be weighted all the way up from 0 to 60%, classwork is included in that, correct?
Yes, ma'am. Assignment, so the class, classwork would be assignments or assessments. That would be part of it, whether they're the major or the minor. And so, that was differentiating homework in a way to limit that as a smaller percentage. But the classwork, because those are assessments and assignments, and I'm speaking, hearing what the instructional folks have said. So I hope I'm getting that right. But that's what the classwork is absorbed into, is part of an assignment or an assessment. It's not just classwork. And then homework remains here, but is, that proportion is limited.
Okay. Thank you. Just wanted to clarify those two things. All right. Then, second, we can throw out many, many books that we read, studies, et cetera, that will say one thing and then say another. Years ago, it was a couple of years ago, I ran across a study, the University of Tennessee, who had a small school district, was not a very large school district, and I believe I shared this with the board at the time. They had two, they wanted to really have a statistical data about the grading policy changes that they did. The no, the no-zero policy, plus, plus no deadlines. They had two middle schools. So they decided to have one middle school with the more stringent policies put in place, and one with the lower standards put in place, as far as the policies go. When those, those two schools fed into the high school, they studied those children through high school. The students who went to the, to the middle school with the higher expectations did much better. They scored better throughout their high school career. So I believe that, that evidence does show the opposite as well. I realize statistics is just that. I don't know what the sample pool is. There could have been flaws in those stats. I get it. However, I am only looking at our particular data that has been provided to us. And I believe this documents that if we continue with these types of grading policies and don't really look into what we're, what we're doing, perhaps readjust these policies to be a little bit more stringent and have more higher, higher expectations, we are going to continue down this path, which is 2018, I'm, if you're seeing this on TV, I know people in the audience can't see this, all this yellow, see all these highlighted yellows? Compared to the more recent year, 2022, 23, very few yellows. What that means is with the higher, with the higher expectations, more of our students passed SOLs and less of our students were failing SOLs. And that's our data. Fairfax County, I believe their policy, they did, they changed their policy, not this last school year, the prior, prior year, this past school year was a transitional year for, for them. And they are going back to the 0 to 100% grade policy. They, last year, they did the A throughout, the letter grades, the 1 through 4, and then also the 0 to 100. This coming up school year, they're only doing 0 to 100%. Their late policy is, of course, if you're sick, there's certain policies that they allow them to retake tests, take tests late, et cetera. However, on normal assessments, test, homework assignments, they have, if a student does not turn it in, or they can turn it in two weeks late, and the teacher may discount that, I don't know if discount's the right word, deduct 10% from, from their, from their, from their grade if it's late. That is nothing like our policy. Our policy just lets students not do a thing. And if we have, if we're, if we're really, truly, if teachers are able to take a classroom full of 25, 30 students and make sure they're all mastering their, their subject, then I don't think our SOL scores will be as low as they are. And I recognize that we don't have this year's SOL scores yet, but come July 26, we ought to at least have insight, at least to this board. I realize we may not want to publicize the, the information yet, because the state will scrub it, and we won't get that information until September. But, but I suspect intuitively, intuitively, the scores can't, they're just not, that we're not going to see high But, but I suspect intuitively, intuitively, the scores can't, they're just not, that we're not going to see high scores because how can a student not have to do the work all the way up until one week before a, before the semester and truly learn the material? They can't. And this, this document, this is our data, documents that. Back in 2018 to 19, I'm just looking at.
Ms. Williams, I don't mean to interrupt you, can we have Dr. Casada explain the data? I'm sorry, I didn't have her present it, but can she explain the data that we're speaking about? Because no one else in the public has seen it yet. So if she can pull it up and explain it. Do you want to do it from up here or down there? It's your choice.
Easier to do it down there.
Thank you.
And I'm not done talking.
Hello again. So the information that you will see on your screen is information that, for the most part, was previously shared with the Policy Committee on June 4th. There's a edition of two slides that break some things down further, which I believe, Ms. Williams, are what you're referencing. So we're going to walk through that. I'm not going to walk through every data point, but to let the public know that this information is out there in board docs. The first thing that we looked at, so that what these next set of slides look at, first, we're comparing the grades students received with whether they passed the SOL exams or not. So in grades three through eight, that's all students in reading and math, right? It gets much trickier when you get to high school because of the way the assessments work. And so that's why we only show Algebra I, the end of course reading test, and Biology, because the numbers of students taking the other tests are too small when you break it out. And students only take those tests if they haven't earned, I'm sorry, a verified credit in with another assessment. So when we, this first slide is showing you with 2022 on the left and 2018, 2022, 23 on the left, I'm sorry, and 2018, 19 on the right, the proportion of students who received grades of A and F who then passed and failed the SOL test. This is where we started and it was because we wanted to look at the extremes, right? Because you anticipate and you'll see that there's correlations with, you tend to see more students with As passing the SOL and fewer students with Fs, which is as it should be. But these correlations are far from perfect because there's not going to be a one-to-one connection anytime, right? When you have two different, two different measures. So this slide shows you, if we look at reading, you can see varying pass rates in the As. It's easier in some ways to understand this quickly if you look at the fail numbers. And so you see in 2022, 23, in grades three through eight, that students who failed courses were not passing, were not passing the reading SOL test. Which tells you that there is a correlation and a connection between passing the class and, and passing the SOL. To some extent, students who are failing the class are also not passing the SOL. In some cases, if they were, the question would be then, what were, what were the challenges in the course that they were, that they were experiencing that were, they were clearly learning material that then they were passing a test, but not being successful in the class? In, so in, in 1819, you saw, especially at the middle school, you saw higher numbers of students who had Fs who were passing the SOL. I can't speak to why that is, I'm just, you can see that there were higher numbers of students passing the SOL. Again, at high school, the numbers, the pattern is not that different from one, from 22, 23 to 2018, 19. You had 58% of students who had Fs passing the SOL in 2020, 23, 22, 23, sorry, compared to 52% in 2018, 19. Again, at high school, students have the opportunity many, many times to take and are remediated for the SOL test after even they fail the class because they have to earn certain verified credits for graduation. So in mathematics, you see a similar pattern to, when you look at the Fs in grades three through eight. When you see, at the middle school level, we included students taking Algebra and Geometry. When you see at A, that means there were no students in Algebra and Geometry who earned Fs in those classes, which is not expect, not surprising because those are students who are accelerated in mathematics in, in middle school. And then in high school, you see similar patterns in the two years. And then in science, you see grades five, grade eight, and Biology. For those watching, you wonder where the other grades are, those are the only grade levels at which there are assessed, students are assessed in Science. And again, Biology was the high school one chosen because after that, the numbers are far too small. It is important to note, especially as we move to the next two slides, that you've got about, on average, 500 to 600 students per grade level taking one of the SOL tests, right? So then when you break the grade distribution down, you're breaking them into smaller numbers. And then when you break and compare it to passing and fail SOL, the numbers of students in each of the cells in the table become, become small. So taking one or two students going one way or the other could have a larger impact on, on a distribution. So which is why you need to look at it in the aggregate and you can't do this really at a school level because the numbers are far too small for you to be able to draw any conclusions, okay? So these calculations that were presented on the first slide and the slides after the next two were done before the school year was over, right? And before the SOL tests were finished. And so these will be updated when we have the finished information. I agree, Ms. Williams, we want to be looking at that before it goes, you know, before the state releases everything. And trust me, we will. So this next slide shows you for the most recent year that the analysis is able to be done at, to date, which is 22, 23. It kind of expands, right? It expands out those columns for students getting every different, one of the grades, course grades, and whether they passed or failed the SOL. So as I mentioned, some of the numbers in some of the cells are, are very small. I, again, particularly when you get to the math courses, the high school level math courses in, for students in middle school, you don't see many students getting the lower grades, which again, is not surprising because these are students in advanced level coursework. So when one looks at this and you see a wide range of numbers, right? You can discern multiple types of, of patterns. But what you, the overall big takeaway is here and on the next slide, there is a correlation between higher grades, more students pass the SOL. It is not a perfect correlation, right? So you can see in places in both years where the percent of students getting a C might be higher at passing than the percent of students who got a B who passed the SOL. But on average, right, if you looked at and if you were to compare the distributions and you look at a line, right? Higher the SOL score, higher the grade, right? That there would be, there would be a correlation. And so again, but correlation does not mean that there's a perfect one-to-one distribution. There are lots of ways you can dig into this and look at more advanced levels of the SOL scoring and that can be done, but this is the starting point. And so this is the score, this is, sorry, this is the, the slide that shows you this past year. And then, because it was too much to put on one slide to can put them side by side. So then you have the 2018, 19% of students passing A, B, C, D, and F. So there's many, many things that come into play between the two years that if we were to do a study like the one you referenced in Tennessee, you'd want to, well, A, you'd have to have a quasi-experimental design and have kids doing two different things. But you also would want to look at what the confounds are, right? And what's tricky is we don't have, we lost two years in the middle for us to be able to, to, to track trends, right? So I can't, as a statistics person, make strong claims from this in any direction because we only have two points in time. So you have the pandemic in the middle of it, you have changes in standards, which means changes in the, the way the state benchmarks and equates the SOLs. And you're going to have that again this year for in 24, 25, you're going to have new reading and mathematics SOL tests. And so all of those things can play a role. The change in the grading policy is definitely something that is clearly a contributing factor one way or the other. But there's a lot that you would need to disentangle to be able to say, aha, it's gone, it's made it get better, it's made it get worse. The one thing that I say is you see in 22, 23 with the Fs, you see in grades three through eight, a connection that looks like there's a, the students who are not passing the course are also not passing the SOL. You of course want students to be passing the SOL, even students who may not be successful in a course. But that, that piece seems strong there. But when you look at the distributions, there's, there's a lot to unpack. So I wish I had a magic answer for you there. The other piece, remember I told you about roughly, you know, 500 to 600 numbers, students taking an SOL test in a given, a given year? These grades, look at those, expand to allow us to look at students in all grades, so not just SOL grades, right? So these next several slides show us the distribution of students receiving particular grades in the main subject areas, so English, Math, Science, and Social Studies. This slide shows you for elementary school. And I will call your attention to, at the end of each set of columns, is the total number of students receiving grades in those subject areas, right, across all of our schools. So you see fluctuations in numbers and then you see those percentages. The bolded numbers are again, like elementary school overall. And then you see the breakdown of kindergarten through grade four. You tend to see, you see differences across subject areas, you see differences from the years. So there's a lot, again, a lot here. In intermediate school, this slide's a little easier because there's only two grade levels. Same thing, again, same numbers of students approximately across grade levels and you see the distributions and how they've changed. And again, you can call the attention, if you're looking at the extremes, because you do see fluctuations in the middle, but you don't see those as dramatic as the changes in the number of students receiving Fs. But they're not dramatic in all areas, they're more dramatic in some. Middle school, same thing, these are the grade level of the student. It's important to note for elementary, intermediate, and middle school, for the last three slides I've shown you, those are the grade level of the student because that aligns to the grade level of the test. And so then you see, at high school, it's important, I want to call attention to a couple of things because you heard me say, oh, we have about 500 to 600 students. You look and you see for ninth grade math in 22, 23, you see 900. And you say, hold on a second, we had 900 ninth graders? No. At high school, it's the grade level of the subject. So you have more students taking Algebra I, which is associated as a ninth grade level course. So, and then, so I call your attention to that number. And then for English, you see a bubble in 10th grade. It's because we started assessing students in, we were catching students up in 10th and 11th grade. And now that's when we started making shifts in our, the number of students taking the SOL, where we, where we administer the end of course reading SOL. Didn't say that very clearly, sorry. So those are the distributions that we have. And we will continue to explore with this year's data and can dig deeper and look at additional things. But that's just one piece, I know of your much larger discussion, about how the policy works. So that's the very quick and dirty piece of the data. So if you don't mind, I'm going to come back up there because I can pull the policy up if I have to answer any other questions.
Sure. Questions on the, on the presentation?
Thank you, Dr. Casada. So, so now that the people were able to see the documents and the data, what I'd like to point out again is back in 2018, 19, there were many more people, even at the lower grade levels, Ds and Fs, that were passing their SOL, so they were learning the material. 2022, 2023, it's 0% passes and at the, people who got Fs excluding 1, 2, 3 grade levels. So we, back in 2018, 19, we had a lot more people passing with, with our old grade policy. That's my whole, that's what I want to point out. And I also want to point out that our, that Fairfax County's policy is not similar to ours. And I feel like what I want to protect, the people who I want to protect are students, our families, and this community. And I think grading policy and having deadlines and expectations are extremely important to, to, I say raising, we're not necessarily raising, but we're educating our students who are going to be our future leaders. And that is the bottom line. And that's why I'm so passionate about this grade policy. I didn't like it when it was brought to us before and I still don't like it. That's it, thank you.
Wait, you know, when we had the Policy Committee meeting and we first saw that first chart, which had the A and the F and the SOL pass rate for 2018, 2019, and then 22, 23, I too saw those kids who were failing the class but passing, passing the SOL. I saw that as a huge problem. Because if we have a percentage of students, and let me go back to that slide, let me pull it up, slide number one. If we have 43% of the students who are failing 7th grade, Language Arts, but are passing the SOL, we have a problem. Our grades should reflect, reflect our SOL pass rates. And if 43% of the kids who have Fs pass the SOL, what's happening in the classroom? If we have 52% of our students who are taking an end-of-year reading exam who failed the class, passed the SOL, what's happening in the classroom? That's the big question we have to ask. And if we can't answer it, then we have an issue. And what I also see as a bigger issue when we look at the grading scale, not the grading scale, excuse me, when we look at these tables is, and I have to go to whichever table it was, but noticing, what are we doing for those kiddos who are failing the class? They're not just a data point, they're people. If they're failing the class and failing the SOL, that in and of itself is a huge issue. And I think that's a much bigger issue and that's the reality that we have to look at. And we shouldn't be okay with seeing Fs for an entire school year, for a third grader who's still learning foundational reading skills. That says there's a problem in the classroom. And that's what we need to fix worse, more, first, if there's a problem in the classroom. And I think that's the bottom line. We're not adequately servicing our students. If 2018, 2019, 43% of the kids who failed 7th grade Language Arts passed the SOL, what grade are those kids in now? Have we tracked those students? Are those students passing classes or are they still failing all their classes? Are they the students who are skipping school now? What's happened to them now? That's what we have to look at. We have to look at what the research tells us, we have to look at what the experts tell us. They're the ones who know the most. It's not me. What I was reading, those are not my own words. I purposefully didn't use my own words because I want the voice of the experts to come through. There are people who've implemented policies like this successfully. There are people who've studied policies like this and different kinds of policies. There are people who study what is the biggest predictor of school success. That's what we're looking at. And when we're talking about our students and we're talking about the future, we can't just talk about the kiddos who have the As, we have to talk about the kiddos who have the Fs. Because those kiddos who have the Fs are going to grow up and they're going to still live in the city of Manassas. And they're going to be our residents and they're going to be our neighbors. Are we okay with letting them fail 3rd grade Language Arts and the 3rd grade reading SOL? That's the bigger problem. And that's something that goes far beyond a grading scale because a grading scale is just a tool to measure student work. That's all it does. It doesn't design student work, it doesn't teach the students, it's not the curriculum. It's a scale, it's a set of numbers and/or letters to say how a student did on something. That's it. If we want to fix what's wrong in our schools, we have to make sure that we're focusing on instruction. We have to make sure that our instruction is meaningful and then it's engaging and that our students are not simply being compliant. That's what we have to do. And that's where I stand. And that's why I stand passionately on this grading policy. We have to recognize that our children are children, their brains are not fully developed. We have to give them opportunities to practice and retry and reassess until they show mastery because that's how they become successful.
Vice Chair Stevens.
Policy Chair Stevens. I want to thank you for the research that you've pulled up on that. Are you able to share that with all of us on the one?
Yes, I can put together a list of the different research, probably in two days.
Okay, that's great. When I make my decision about this, and I know we're not voting tonight, but I really, I rely heavily on the research that you've conducted and the recommendation from the Policy Committee. So this edited policy, grading policy is what you're recommending to us.
So, oh, sorry, yes, as of right now, we are. Now, if during discussion, as with anything, any decision that the board makes, it's the will of the board. It's not the will of one individual on the board. Should the committee, not the committee, excuse me, the board as a whole say, well, let's go back and tweak X on here? That's fine, we can go back and do that. We do however, want to make sure that whatever decisions we make, we make prior to the start of the school year.
Exactly.
Because teachers are getting their grade books set up between the first week.
Because teachers are getting their grade books set up between the first week before school to the first couple of weeks after the school starts, and we need to give them the opportunity to do that before they're actually assigning schoolwork.
Any other questions from the board for Dr. Casada or Vice Chair Stevens? Mrs. Brezcha.
Thank you very much, it's so nice to be able to speak on this. This is my first time speaking on this since August of last year. So, what's in front of us right now is a recommended set of policy revisions, and so I do, there's a lot of philosophy, there's a lot of research, there's a lot of, there's a lot of extra that's around this, which is why these policies are controversial wherever they go. This is not unique to Manassas City, they are controversial wherever they go. Lots of new, strong opinions about grading and what it's for. So I would like to just stay as focused as we can on the policy that is in front of us, that we are being asked to consider, and on the data that we were just presented. Dr. Casada, I do want to acknowledge you publicly for your professionalism doing this fraught topic. It is a, a topic that I think it makes every single one of us up here nervous to discuss, so thank you for that compilation. I wanted to give a little bit of background as to where that data come from, came from, and what it was for, and it was at my request that this data was compiled and presented. And my intention in asking for these things was to decide whether we need to make a change or not. You know, it is something telling us in this data from our own students in our own schools that, you know, these grades are working as we had hoped and intended. And, you know, the policy committee already decided, yes, that a few changes were necessary. I think, yes, some additional changes are, are also necessary. I would like to take the opportunity to correct the record. Vice Chair Stevens, you said at the beginning of your remarks that the hope is to revert back to the previous policy, and I don't, I do not blame you for making that assumption because we haven't talked about this in this public forum since August of 2023, but that's actually not what I'm hoping for. I'm hoping that we can collaborate together and come up with a grading policy that works for Manassas City students, and, you know, this is, it's a group project. This is, we talk a lot about Governance Team, and I think this is a good opportunity for us to be a team, and I know when I am outnumbered, so I'm not going to be pushing any reversion to any previous or traditional scale. You know, I want to work together productively with my colleagues. So let's go back to the data. We were talking about SOLs and the grade assigned because the SOLs are, is, that's how we measure learning in Virginia, that's just how we do it. You can have opinions about how tests, standardized tests, you, there's many philosophies about standardized testing, but that's what it is currently. The SOLs are how we measure learning in Virginia. And I wanted to see how, if at all, our grades had, our grade distribution had changed with our SOL pass rates. And I did find it interesting and significant, if you go to page four of that presentation, I don't know if we're able to pull that up.
She's pulling it up.
And while we're pulling this up, I will acknowledge that, you know, the, there did seem to be a tighter correlation around Fs. So we used to have kids who failed their course but passed their SOLs, which is a problem, because it means that now something is causing you to fail the course when actually you understand the material. So there does seem to be some positive momentum there, and I'm grateful for the opportunity to see that. However, most students do not get Fs, most students get As, Bs, Cs, or Ds. And if you take a look at, we'll just, we'll just pick reading, because math was a little, we had some aberrations in math last year, we'll just pick reading. So if you look at 7th grade reading in 2018, 19, that's page four, if you look at students receiving a D in reading in 7th grade, 48% of those kids pass the SOL, which is indeed a passing grade, you know, D is a passing grade, you know, so it makes sense that that would be about what you would expect. But in 22, 23, we go back to 7th grade reading on the next page, page three, only 3% of those kids are passing their SOLs now, who've received a D. And a D, you're supposed to have passed the class, you're supposed to have mastered the material if you are receiving a D grade. It gets actually even worse with Cs, if we go back, sorry, sorry, Ms. Garza, to page four, 7th grade reading, C grades, we have 62% of kids who are passing their SOLs, receiving a C grades. So greater likelihood than not that you are passing your SOL if you receive a C grade in 2018, 19. But if you go to page three, now a C grade is correlated with 17% pass rate. So now we have kids who are receiving C grades home on their report card, which is supposed to indicate an average mastery of the concepts, and yet only 17% of them are actually able to perform on that SOL test. And it goes down the line, you know, Bs, 78% went to 55%, and As did stay the same, 93 to 93. So to me, this is a problem, because I don't think we are communicating effectively with our students and our families when we send home a C grade. I think most students and families assume if you are receiving a C grade, that means you have greater likelihood than not that you have mastered the content and that you are fine to pass your SOLs. But we have it right here in front of us, that that's not currently happening. Now, to Dr. Casada's point, that there's a lot that happened between 2018 and 2019, 2018, 2019, and 22, 23, this is not a controlled experiment by any means, and statistics are strange, so we have to, at a certain point, make a judgment, yes, at a certain point, there is a judgment call that we have to make, and only the seven of us up here are empowered to make that judgment call. But I do find this, you know, we can pick at random any grade, and all of them, all of these grade levels now are performing that way. Basically, we have now, our A students, well, our B students are now performing more like old C students, our C students are now performing more like old D students, and our D students are now performing more like F students. And, so I do think we have a problem here. And I think that there is, I do think we have options in front of us to address it. I do also want to just leave a little pinpoint in here. I asked this question last year, Dr. Casada, so you might not remember this conversation, but one of the things I had been interested in measuring with this was to see if we had had a change in when work was being submitted, like how further, how much further out from the deadline. So, but it was my recollection, and you can confirm, that Power School does not measure
So it's because teachers collect information through their grade books that then get imported into Power School, particularly back in 2000, going back to 2018, 19, there's a lot of inconsistency with what's in there, being able to pull when things were turned in versus when a grade was updated versus when a grade was entered. There's not a way to reliably do the statistical analysis in a way that I would feel comfortable making a decision based on the information we can extract.
Right. So it's not possible to get a, to have a data-informed decision on the incidence of homework being, of classwork assessments, homeworks, et cetera, being turned in late.
Not a historical one going back in time, right? Like you, you know, an individual teacher can tell you, oh, I have this information, I know when these things are, but the way that the information comes in to do it on a wide scale and to be able to make a claim of division-wide, this is what's happening, historically, that's not something that, we can make those comparisons in a way that I would feel comfortable from a mathematical, well, put that hat on, someone talked about hats, that hat on for that one.
So if anybody is watching at home and wondering why that piece was not included in this data analysis, it's because that data does not exist, or cannot be made to exist in any reliable way. So, the point of the data was to decide whether or not we need to be, make a change, and what changes we might want to consider. Like I said, the, the answer to that already appears to be yes, because this policy that's in front of us now does have some changes in it, and I would like to discuss those changes. So one of the, one, one significant change is the, are the first two bullet points on page, or not, I'll just read it out loud, because it's a three-page policy. The policy has changed in several ways. The proposed revised policy states, "Teachers will give students full credit earned on all reattempts, and will use the greater of the two scores to calculate a quarter grade. Students must submit all reattempts prior to the end of the quarter." This also, and it goes on later to say, "Students will earn full credit for any assignments, assessments, as long as it is completed and submitted to the teacher no later than one week prior to the end of the quarter that it was assigned." So previously, those two, we have two categories of work, we have missing work, and we have reattempt works. Previously, those shared the same deadline at the very end of the quarter, but now one of those categories, the, the, let's see, the missing work must be turned in now one week prior to the end of the quarter. So now we are creating a distinction between those two, and I would just like to discuss a little bit more where that came, you know, I would, my question is, why are we now making a distinction between those two?
Um, I, you can, it's, it's your, I can pull up something if you gave me.
Yeah, so, one of the distinctions is, is there's a difference between work that hasn't been submitted and something that's being, that a student is doing a retake on. Generally speaking, when a student is doing a retake or a reattempt on something, it could be an assignment or an assessment that was assigned that last Friday of the quarter. So it would be impossible for that student to retake it if it was assigned that Friday before the last week of the quarter. They would need to be able to retake it that last week of the quarter. Does that make sense?
Okay, yes.
And then also, if you think about it, when students are retaking a test, there's often steps that they must complete before they retake it. And those steps may take a period of time, that student may have to complete a practice module, may have to go back and submit any incomplete assignments that were leading up to that test, they may be required to stay after school for a tutoring session, so there are all different things that could lead up to that retake, that would require more time, that would go into that last week of the quarter.
And to, I'm sorry, just to add to your, not to cut you off, but to add to that, that that bullet relates to the bullet above it about, in order to do a retake or a reassign, a reattempt, there would need to be remediation, which was not in there previously, so the point would be if that would allow for those things to be assigned or required up until the end of the quarter, but that an initial attempt, if a student can't save everything that they haven't done for the entire quarter and pop it all in on the last day. But then if they've been working on a reattempt or reassessment, that, that could happen into that last week, is my understanding of the logic for the change.
Yes.
Okay, so I want to make sure that I'm under, that I, I want to make sure that I'm understanding. So the reattempts, there's a theory that reattempts take longer to accommodate any remediation, so want more time for that. And that missing work is, because it hasn't been attempted at all, should be done one week before, but I still don't quite understand why we picked one week before the end of the quarter.
My understanding from conversations with Dr. Newman and Mr. Gaffeler and others is that the concern was, if it was all the way up, if students hadn't turned in anything, an assignment up until the end of the quarter, teachers haven't seen it, it ties their hands a little bit in terms of the timing for when they have to grade it before they have to have their quarter grades done. For a reattempt, those would be, in theory, fewer in number, and the student would be working with the teacher on the remediation that would be required in order to, for them to do it. So that, giving them that last chance for things that they had turned in, or a test that they had taken, that they were allowed to retake because they met the requirements, that could go up until the end, but the, the distinction would be to move that, because in, in the original policy, I mean, the current policy, let me say that, the current policy says up to the end of the quarter and doesn't differentiate, and so teachers were concerned that they got to turn grades around really quickly, and if they get a pile of work at the very last day that they've never seen, that that makes their job that much harder in terms of assigning the grades. So this was in some ways a compromise to push that back, but then also add the language in about the remediation requirement before a reattempt or a reassessment.
So, most school divisions deal with this issue by assigning a two-week deadline, and not an eight-week deadline, quarters are nine weeks, an eight-week deadline up until the very, up until the very end. Most school divisions who have a 10-point scale, you know, 50 to 100 grading system like we do, do make provision for that, and they give students a two-week window to make it up, so that it is connected at, in time, closer to a point in time to when the learning's actually happening and to when they're actually being assessed on it. Two weeks is actually quite a bit of time, and of course, special provisions are, you know, if somebody is gone for two weeks at a period of time, of course, that student should be able to re-enroll in school and get the supports they need, but most of our students are not going two weeks where they are completely missing. Most of our students attend school most of the time, and most school divisions deal with the missing work by giving either a two-week window or by making all assignments in a unit do the day of the unit test, because that work is supposed to go towards informing the unit test. So why did we reject that regional standard of either two weeks or up until the unit
That decision was made based on input from Dr. Newman, Mr. Gaffeler, and what the experts say is that while there are going to be students who do turn everything in at the end of the quarter or the last week of the quarter, the vast majority of students don't do that. And if you have a class where all the students are doing that, that speaks to a slightly different kind of problem, that's not a grading scale problem, that may be more like a classroom management problem, which needs to be addressed in a different way.
I would favor either a two-week deadline window or a deadline that goes until the date of the unit assessment, you know, with the summative assessment, and I favor this because the other experts in the other school divisions, I, if there's one thing, that Arlington, Fairfax, Alexandria, all of these places are filled with experts. And I do not think that our current deadline policy is conducive, sets up the right incentives and guardrails for, to promote student learning, and we can see that in what has happened to our BCD students. So that is what I'm submitting to the, that's one of the things I'm submitting to the board, is I would like us to consider a two-week window or a unit test deadline. I personally favor the unit test deadline, but I am here to, you know, this is not the, you know, Sarah Show, this is the Governance Team, so however we want to proceed with that, I would be, you know, I'm all ears, I'm open for it. The other, I will also share as an interesting insight, one of the questions I had was, what if you, so let's say this week was the end of a quarter, and Friday was the end of the quarter, and today, Tuesday, I didn't turn in my missing work. I missed it completely. What happens in that last week?
Can you restate the question, I'm sorry?
So, let's say the end of the quarter is Friday, and we're here today, and it's Tuesday. What happens if I missed my work on Tuesday? I have missed the deadline according to the policy, I only have one week from the date of the quarter, and I've missed it less than one week to the end of the quarter, so what is, what happens then?
Well, you've hit that one week before the end of the quarter unless they're extenuating I, I wasn't privy to the email, so I don't know the original answer or the original question.
Well, I have it here.
Okay.
So, it's the same, so I'll, I'll read the whole thing. What happens when work is assigned and not attempted with less than a week to go before the end of the quarter? For example, if the end of the quarter is Friday and a student does not do the work assigned to them on Tuesday, are they permitted to make it up by Friday? Or are they, you know, out of luck? What's, what, how does that, how does that policy work? And the response from Dr. Casada, thank you, Dr. Casada, like I said, I have lots of appreciation for entertaining me with this back and forth, for, for giving me this, for, you know, giving, going back and forth with me before the meeting. If teachers assign work within the last week of the quarter, students are expected to turn it in on time. The teacher would have discretion to work with a student if extenuating circumstances exist, and then the goal of the one week before the end of the quarter deadline for previously missing assignments is to reduce the amount of work that students would turn in at the very last minute, which has been a concern of teachers. So that last part we discussed, but I did have a reaction to that answer, because we have one week of the quarter where we are expecting kids to turn the work in on time, but not for the eight preceding weeks. So I do think that the, this deadline, the deadline part of the policy- So I do think that the, this deadline, the deadline part of the policy is worth a second look. Um, I would also, I mean, unless we can, we can talk about one thing at a time, I don't know what other people's reactions are to either a two-week window or a unit assessment deadline.
Thank you, Ms. Breja. We'll talk, we can discuss that, sorry, I had to text my 10-year-old who was going somewhere she wasn't supposed to be going. That is something we can definitely entertain. Depending upon where the conversation goes, if there, if there was anyone who has other ideas or thoughts to modifications to the proposed policy, my thinking, and I would really have to touch base with Dr. Newman on this, is to take this draft policy, create another draft policy just like that, but with either that two-week window or by the day of the unit test, um, that would have either one of those in it, so that both of them could be looked at at the next school board meeting, because we have to vote the next school board meeting. And we don't technically have to vote, but we need to make a decision before the start of the school year. So, so that's where that is.
One thing that I did want to correct was that this policy, draft policy, was created from a group with all grade levels, and in order to create the final product.
Thank you. Um, and if we have a minute, can we go back to the data? Because this data, Dr. Casada's presentation on the data, because this data is kind of new to all of us. We've not seen something like this before. But as we were looking at the comparison between, between 2018 and 20, 2018, 2019, and 2022, 2023, I noticed something. As school board members, whenever we're presented with data that shows year-over-year growth, we're always recommended to follow the cohort. So, the students who were seventh graders in 22, 20, 2022, 2023, to look at them and compare them to a 2018, 2019 group, we would go, have to go back to whichever grade they were in, in 2018, 2019. What grade is that?
Third.
Third. Yeah, so if we go back to 2018, 2019, and we look at the pass/fail ratio for reading 2018, 2019, 19% of the third graders passed the SOL, while, once they went, and this is when they went to eighth grade?
Yeah, so this is only pass rates, so that's reading, that's coming in.
Okay. So if we look at third graders in 2018, 2019, if we look at their reading SOL score, students who passed the class with a C had a 19% pass rate and an 81% fail rate. If we go back a slide, to slide three, and we look at those students as they were in 22, 23, they were seventh graders. If we look at the C, it's 17, if we look at students who earned a C for the year, the pass rate was 17%, and the fail rate was 83%. That's a 2% difference. If we're talking a smallish number of students, and, Dr. Casada, I don't even know if you can give me an estimate, number of seventh graders?
So, number of seventh graders in 22, 23?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Yeah, you have that, I'm sorry.
The reading test was 509 students.
Okay.
So, just hold on one second, this is 18, 19, they were third graders. I think that 23, 24, they're eighth graders, not seventh graders.
Okay.
The data are from 22, 23, when they were seventh graders.
Right.
We don't have the 24 data yet.
Okay, so this is wrong.
Yeah. That's okay. So, when we look at that, that 2% difference could represent one child. It would be, it could represent a relatively small number. So when we compare cohorts year over year, I would rather, instead of making any decision based on these snapshots right here, I would like to see how cohorts progressed, because that's more accurate. We also always, and I know it's already been mentioned, we need to mention that 2019, 2020 school year and 2020, 2021 school year. And although, we were all back in the building for 21, 21, 22, it was a very odd year. It was not a normal school year. Normal school years didn't restart until 2022, 2023. So we have to think about those things when we're thinking about those numbers. Otherwise, any other questions?
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I don't have any questions. I do just have a comment, because I had, when I re, when I looked at this draft, in my view, I felt like we should really discuss and perhaps change, revisit three of the bullet points, um, which were the two we've already talked about, and then revisit the no-zero policy. And maybe, maybe, maybe it stays the same, maybe we revisit it. But perhaps, from here forward, because everything else is basically the same and perfectly fine, and in my view, um, the fourth bullet point, where it says, "School's department or grade level team shall determine the weighted formula for calculating final grades for each quarter," I think that whole bullet point, I believe that's perfectly fine. So in my view, we could narrow it this, narrow this down and just discuss the, the three bullet points, the teachers will give students full credit earned on all reat, reattempts, and will use the grade of the two score, scores. Students will earn full credit all up, up until one week, and then the no-zero policy. If we just, if we just focus on those three, and perhaps we can, we can even maybe revisit and look at our policies prior to COVID, and come up with some kind of compromises that will work well for, for our students. Not just this board, but our students, keeping in mind that we've got goals that, that we want to meet by 2027.
So, Ms. Williams, question for you, and this might be a clarification question. When you're talking about changing these policies, what is your desire or your goal for those policies to do for our students? Are you expecting them to have higher pass rates, higher grades, better graduation numbers? What, what are you, what is the outcome you want?
The outcome I would like to see is, I would like for us, I would like to see our, our policies to be more in line with our surrounding districts, number one. Number two, I would really like our students to, to, um, be successful. I want, we want to graduate students who, who are ready for the real world, ready for college, ready for the workforce. That's what, that's my goal. That's my goal.
So...
And, 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 I'm a little competitive, so I'd really like to get as close to our strategic plan in 2027 as we can.
I, I think we would all like that. I think you speak for us in all of that. So, changing the grading policy, do you think that, um, changing those bullet points will result in more students passing the SOL?
I believe they will learn material. I believe there, we will have increased learning, and that should be our goal.
Is there a correlation between a grading policy and increased learning? Because I've not found one.
Given the data that we just looked at, I believe that, that is an absolute yes.
Well, Dr. Casada did say that we can't make judgments based on this data, because we only have two data points. That we need more data points before we can discuss or look at a trend. I think it would also help if, and I'm not asking Dr. Casada to do this, because that requires a whole nother batch of work, but to better understand the differences between 2018 and 2019, we can, need to compare cohorts. So those students where they were in 2018, 2019, compared to where they are in 2023, 2022, 2023. Dr. Casada's going to chime in, she may.
So, you, um, as you've all been talking, there are things that could be looked at with a cohort. The caution is, you had, third graders in 2018, 19, are now, just finished eighth grade, right? So again, there are many, many things in, involved there. Looking at the same students, over the course of it, you still have a gap of a couple of years where there are no SOL data points, right? We didn't have them for, well, we didn't have enough in 21 for it to be valid, and we didn't have any in 2020. So, um, I don't, um, we will certainly look at the data that we have from this year. Grades are done now, you know, we can, we can do those kind of analyses and compare to see if, to see what that looks like. And that, in and of itself, to do something similar for this year is not that difficult to do. The cohort really only works for a couple of grade levels, because otherwise, other than the third graders in 2018, 19, you don't real, you can't track the rest of them, because once you get to high school, the cohort model doesn't quite work. So I don't know, um, that the juice is worth the squeeze on that particular piece, because you only have one cohort to look at. So, um, I think that that's, there is, is digging. I also have made notes, you mentioned about another draft of a policy with a couple, with other things that the board is saying. The things I'm hearing are that, you know, whether it's the two-week or the unit, the unit for something, again, depending on the direction the board gives, I'm hearing about similar to other, or other jurisdictions, which again, have evolved over time themselves. So looking at that, if you want other drafts, certainly other drafts can be put together for your consideration. I'm trying to take notes of the things that you all are suggesting as tangible suggestions that could be put into a draft, to make it easier, so it's not about the philosophy or whatever, and it's turned into words on a piece of paper for you to compare, right? And so, it sounds like the desire is not to go back to, and I can't speak to the policy pre, pre the current policy, because I was not here and I'm not as familiar with it. I've only looked at the data pieces, right? But, um, Ms. Williams was saying, we've got pieces of this, if everybody agrees to some of them, and if you're zeroing in on potential changes, we can certainly mock up other options for you to be considering, um, based on your conversation. So I'm trying to keep a list of those things, so we can do that proactively for you, um, to inform your, to give you options.
Thank you, I appreciate that, and I appreciate your input. Um, I may defer to Chair Seberg in just a minute. I would be open to discussing or looking at a policy that included a deadline on missing work, but I feel very strongly about the other pieces of the policy. I feel there's strong pieces to the policy, and I would, I, as a school board member, and as an individual, and as a parent, I would not want to change the other bullet points. I would be open to discussing the deadlines piece for missing work, but the other pieces I would like to see kept the same. But let me just defer to Chair Seberg for a minute. We can present, can we, and you may not have this answer, present this policy and then an additional potential policy that would have, let's say, the deadlines added? Can we present them both at the next school board meeting and vote on them? Or do, or does that newer one that's got the edits have to go on to the discussion agenda?
We can do that, yeah, we can do that.
Okay, okay. They, thank you, just making sure that we're following the appropriate steps for school board protocol when introducing items.
Very good.
Any other questions? Thoughts? Mrs. Breja?
Would you like to go first?
No, I'm just going on to the next agenda item, unless you have a question.
I wanted to thank Vice Chair Stevens for, um, the productive engagement on this topic, and for your willingness to move forward with a deadline adjustment. I did have just a comprehension question on a few other pieces of the policy that I would like to discuss. So, the remediation bullet point, this is, this is new. This was a, this did not exist in the previous version of this policy. And I have, I just want to make sure everybody knows what this means, and if there's any room for misunderstanding, we have an opportunity to clear it up. So the draft policy reads, "Teachers may require students to participate in some form of remediation activity before being allowed to re-attempt an assignment assessment." The question, my, you know, I often send my questions in advance, and I thought that this one was a good one to discuss. When I asked that question of the administration, I asked, you know, so who is setting the parameters for these remediation activities? Is that an individual teacher, department head CLT situation, is it a principal situation? And, Dr. Casada, you can speak if you want to, but I can just read the answer that was given, so that we can digest it.
That's fine.
And the answer that was given was, the intent was for, the intent is for that to be for assignments and assess, and, oh, okay, sorry, nevermind. "The parameters should be set collaboratively by departments and collaborative learning teams. Administrators will be part of those conversations during CLT time." And this, I, I just wanted to be, um, thinking about this remediation happening during CLT time, and then having, but having the word "may" in the policy, it kind of sounded like if we're expecting teachers to be, you, doing this in their CLT time, that it's actually "will." You know what I'm saying? And not "may" provide remediation.
So, just to clarify the response, right? The decision was about the collaboration, about the parameters for the remediation would be discussed in CLT time, not the remediation would happen during CLT time. The parameters would be set collaboratively, and, um, and this, I know, other places have done it this way, that they'd say, okay, a department or a grade level team would say that students need to, um, complete a series of, like, you have to do a quiz review packet, or you have to do these things before you can retake a test. And so the decision would be made by the fifth-grade language arts team, that this is their requirement for remediation. Those decisions would be made during the CLT time as to how remediation would work. Not that the remediation for students would happen during the CLT time. Just to make sure I'm clarifying that. But those decisions, because the way I under, we, we understood the question was, how was the, the parameters, that would, um, the parameters would be set collaboratively, and then that would be implemented with teachers, the way they work with students, whether it be through their, in their classroom, or targeted support block, or however, but that wouldn't be them giving up their CLT time to do the remediation. That would be happening the way other instruction and remediation already happens.
And I, I can speak to what it looks like i- in real world. So, and, and this is to CLTs that I'm a part of, the CL team, CLT team works together to possibly develop the assessment. And some of the CLTs I belong to, there is a reassessment created, or there's an activity, or a module, or something that the student will have to do. When it comes to remediation, remediation can take many, many different forms. I know teachers who stay after school one day a week to provide remediation to anybody who needs it. I know some teachers who will have a student create or complete an online review packet through an online program that actually grades the work, so the teacher doesn't have to grade the work. Some teachers may require a error analysis to be done, for the students to figure out what the error was that they made, how they made the error, what they needed, need to do to correct it. So those are all the different things that can be done, and that's when having a CLT is a great thing, because you can divide and conquer. So you're not creating that assessment, and you're not creating the remediation, and you're not creating the new, the retake. You're creating one that is shared by your team, and maybe another member of the team is sharing the remediation with the whole team, and then a third person might be sharing the retake with the whole team.
Okay, so the, whether or not to offer remediation, whose decision is that?
So that, as it stands right now, that is up to the teacher. Teachers may require students...
Individual teacher, individual teacher, sorry.
Yes. Because there may be some teachers who say, okay, just retake it. You got one question below whatever XYZ was. There may be some times where teachers do that. This is not, the "may" is so that teachers don't have to provide a specific kind of remediation. It provides teachers with flexibility to best fit the classroom structure, the content area, or what exactly is being taught at that time, or even the student body.
Um, I do think that, you know, we're not voting on this tonight, I do think that this is a valuable opportunity for feedback. I don't know how many of our MCPS teachers are watching school board meetings in the middle of July, but if you are watching, I, I am interested in hearing that feedback, how this would actually work in the classroom. I have heard various reactions and experiences with the remediation protocol, and I can see our teaching staff having reactions to this bullet point either way. So I would be interested to hear from people in terms of how they think this is going to work, if what we've laid out here is going to be conducive to student learning and also conducive to teacher sanity, because I would not want to sit up, set up a situation where we're having to do CLTs for the main lesson, and then a parallel track of CLTs for the remediated lessons, you know?
Generally speaking, it's, doing the retakes is a usually very simple process, and most teachers today, or at least the teachers that I have worked with, when they create assessments, they create them in online programs where they can adjust and change the assessments. Sometimes what teachers will do is they'll change what the questions are on the retake, or they'll just change the order that the questions are in, and if it's multiple choice, they might change whether on question six, A is the correct answer or C is the correct answer. Sometimes the tweaks can be as small as that. And oftentimes, when students are being assessed, especially on major summative assessments, which is large tests, large tests almost always cover multiple standards. And what some teachers do is, if a student takes a large test and they got Bs and Cs on... on three standards, but they got a D on a certain standard, like 7.6H, I don't know, that's the standard I'm calling it in language arts, that teacher could just reassess that seven point whatever that I just rattled off. They wouldn't be required to create a whole new test. Furthermore, the retake doesn't actually have to be a test. It can be a conversation with, with the student, where the student is able to verbalize mastery of whatever they struggled with on that original assessment. So that "may" and that language being what it is, it provides teachers with more leeway to do what works best in their classroom for themselves and their students.
Thank you for that. I mean, I do myself personally like the idea of some more guardrails around re-attempt qualifications. You have sometimes divisions only permit re-attempts when students have failed an assessment or an assignment and in order to prevent the kid who got the 80 from chasing a 100, right? But if there's no appetite for that, then I'm willing to let it go because it's not a, this is a team exercise after all. I also wanted to draw attention, the, the previous version of this policy had 55% for a reasonable attempt and that language is gone now. So, but is there going to be training on the policy that is passed next meeting?
So speaking for Dr. Newman and the instructional team, there would absolutely need to be, right? Because you'd be making changes as well as the pieces at the end that talk about the communication of the waiting and all of that stuff to parents and families ahead of time. That would absolutely have to be, there'd have to be professional learning around that, absolutely. Yeah.
I would also watch out for Power School. I did notice when my child's report card came home that the A through F scale was on there and it included a zero to, you know, zero to six, you know, zero to 59, you know, if this is, if we're doing a 10-point band, then we need to change.
Yes, we do.
All right. I think we can move on.
Right. Oops, sorry. Anybody else have any questions?
All right. I will move along.
No, it's okay. I, I just don't want to lose sight of the fact that, you know, in 22, 23, we had 900 students trying to take the ninth grade math SOL. We need to give these kids opportunity to master content and I don't want to lose sight of that through all of, all of this. You know, when we are reducing special provisions by creating our own policies, you know, I think that's the right direction. We need to do what's best for our students. But with that said, I'm more than happy to look at potential revisions. I'm more than happy to seek compromise because I do think that the more, you know, eyes that look at a policy, the better the policy is probably going to be. But I, I don't want to lose sight of the fact that, you know, there are certain places where kids are really getting hung up and, you know, I want our kids, particularly in math, to feel strong and confident, you know? I mean, math is the greatest debilitating that I know of in terms of holding kids back from what they think they are able to do in later life, whether it's in college or not. So, you know, math is not the only subject, but I want to make sure that we are focusing on important subjects and that is a, a big one that's of concern to me. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Spall. I'm glad you got that in there. Well said. Anything else, Vice Chair?
Nope. Not at this time.
Great. Let's move on to the action agenda. Under Student Services, Ms. Jackie Sott, Student Services Coordinator, will present the proposed draft of the Student Code of Conduct for the 2425 school year.
Good evening. Alba, can you please pull up the slides for me? Thanks so much. Tonight I present the revised draft of the 2425 Code of Conduct, specific to the recommendations that were put forth at the June 25th board meeting. As suggested, can you go to the next slide, please? I'm sorry, there we go. As suggested, all of the bullets have been reformatted throughout the document. There was a lot of inconsistency in the bullet points, so they have been reformatted to one uniform shape and color. It is the red diamonds that you see on the right side of the bus violation. I just used, I just use this section of the Code of Conduct as an illustrative demonstration of how they were changed. The next and final revision is a change in the terminology used in Section 14, portable electronic devices. The phrase "on school premises" has been replaced with "during the school day" to allow pre-K through sixth grade students who may attend after-school activities, school-sponsored events, or in cases of emergencies, the flexibility to communicate with parents or guardians without requesting prior approval from an administrator. That are the only two, those are the only two revisions from the last board meeting. So I'll answer any questions that you may have.
Any questions from the board on these revisions or anything else on the Code of Conduct? Mrs. Brezian?
So we did have one piece of feedback that came in from a bus driver who, that I did share with everybody. Actually, can you go back to the bus dri, you know, the one you just happened to pull? So this bus driver, and many thanks to you for taking, the bus driver in question for taking the time to look over with it and engage with it. This bus driver was concerned, she practices a no PED policy on her bus, that she feels like that's what she needs to do to safely operate the bus. She doesn't want kids, you know, to incite bullying instances, viewing inappropriate content, whatever. Dr. Newman did, I asked Dr. Newman to look into what some of our neighboring divisions do for PEDs on the bus and the results of that broad survey seemed to be that most people were on vacation, but the people who did respond said that they have a policy saying PEDs are generally allowed, but that the bus driver has complete discretion over the use of those devices, including to have them put away completely. And I am wondering, perhaps, you know, I see now that the second bullet point is students must obey the driver's instructions. Maybe we don't need a, maybe we'd need just a comma there, you know, including regarding use of PEDs and we can be responsive to that feedback? Or if we wanted to add something to the PED section or how we might want to respond to that feedback as a board?
I, I think on the personal devices, you know, Governor Mary Yonkin just put out his executive order today, so I hate to say this, Ms. Sott, we may end up having to revisit the Code of Conduct and that would likely inform us on attitudes, policies, Code of Conduct towards personal devices on the bus. Because that, the executive order was literally just today.
Right.
And there's not been additional guidance with it yet, I don't think.
Right. There has. And I think it's Dr. Casati, September 16th, is that?
Yep. So the executive order that was released at noon today by the governor is the goal of like cellphone-free schools. What it directs, the first half really of the executive order directs VDOE to develop guidance and model policies around this to be released no later than September 16th for school divisions to make sure they're following those things by January 1st. So Ms. Sott and I talked before the meeting and so the direction that this policy was all, this Code of Conduct's already going with, with portable electronic devices or cell phones is moving in the direction already. When we get guidance from VDOE, then any response to that could necessitate changes, but it would make sense to make those, once we know what those recommendations are. That's separate from the bus discussion, but that's about the, the use of it. So that will be, once we know the guidance and the model policies from the state, those would be reviewed and then any recommended or necessitated changes would be developed, a plan for developing those, getting input and having those developed to be in place by January 1st would come. But that wouldn't come until the state does their piece, which is define the parameters.
And then it goes to the VSBA and a policy, a model policy is drafted and then it comes to the Policy Committee.
And just for clarification, the Section 4 was really just here as an illustrative demonstration of what the bullets were changed. If we look at the changes that we did add to the 14 at the, at the board's request during the school day, that in fact is included in the to and from school.
Okay. So the current language that we have, both the bus section and in this, that bus driver does have the authority to enforce a no PED rule on her bus if she so chooses.
I believe so.
Yes. Okay. So you can play this YouTube for your students if they give you a hard time.
Any other questions or comments?
We all took a momentary break. Can I look at your agenda? I don't know where to find. Chair, I move that the School Board of the City of Manassas approve, approve the proposed 2024-2025 Student Code of Conduct as presented.
Second.
I have a motion by Vice Chair Stevens, seconded by Mr. Hollingsworth. That the School Board of the City of Manassas approved the proposed 2425 Student Code of Conduct as presented. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries 7-0. All right. Now we reach the part in our agenda where school board members make comments and I'll call first on Mrs. Brezian.
Oh, I'm first.
Yep. That's what it says on the agenda.
I, it is, sorry. I didn't, I've got all this paper here. Want to wish everybody a happy summer. I want to highlight the Weems Summer Library Hours, Wednesdays, 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. if you are in the Weems neighborhood. You can walk and visit the Weems Library and engage in some nice, air-conditioned, productive activities, so I want to make sure everyone is aware of that. I want to thank my fellow board members for a civil engagement on this very high-voltage topic of the grading policy. I do appreciate it. I'm looking forward to seeing what revisions we can come through together. It is still not my dream policy, but that's not how it goes in a deliberative process such as this and I'm thankful, I'm thankful for the opportunity to engage and move forward. So thank you to everyone on that.
Thank you. Mrs. Williams.
Thank you, Mrs. Chair. Well, I hope everybody enjoyed their Fourth of July and are enjoying their summer. Since Mr. Hilton is still here, I do want to say how much we appreciate everybody in the maintenance crew and of course, everybody, everybody on staff. A couple of years ago, we had a Manassas Reed's in the middle of, I believe it was April and it was so windy and the Manassas City Maintenance guys were right there helping us, trying to keep this banner from blowing off. So we very much appreciate everything you and you, your, your staff does. I want to welcome all of the new, whether, whether it's new to our family or just new to the new position, you've got a lot of work ahead of you, but I am confident in, in everything that you do and I'm very confident in our students. I promise you, if we just work with them, respect them and hold them accountable for some things, they are going to surprise you. We've got some great students here and I think you're going to really enjoy it. Summer school's happening. I wish everybody luck in summer school, keep reading. We've got some students who are so close to graduating, who are having to finish some, some of their courses or some of their tests or some of their SOLs throughout this summer and we will be having a graduation for them. So I wish them the best of luck as well. And that's all I have for tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Brooks?
Thank you. I also want to welcome all the new and shifting administrators because, you know, always it's nice to see new life breathed in and changes. I also want to thank the board and the staff for all the work that goes on behind the scenes and up here to try and make sure that we're doing the best for our students, because that's what we all, that's a goal of all of us. Our students mastering the education and going out and being great members in the community. So I appreciate that and I know we all have a lot to go back and ponder and thank you for the information brought forth. And try to stay cool out there. It's hot. But be safe and have a great rest of your summer.
Thank you. Mrs. Spall?
Hi. I echo everyone's comments about welcoming new staff. I wanted to just give a brief announcement that I'm pleased to report that we're commissioning, we have, after much deliberation, we've decided to commission a study regarding our communication strategies at MCPS as they relate to all facets of communication with our various publics. Once the study is complete, we'll be forming a special committee in the coming months to review the results and make recommendations to the school board and the superintendent on the status of our communications. I'm excited about this opportunity to benchmark where we are with respect to communication in our school system and look forward to exploring ways to excel in the news that we share with our public. The study of communications is a passion for me, so if you are like-minded or interested in participating in our Communications Committee at a future date, you may register your interest with our School Board Clerk. And then I'd just like to encourage everyone to make sure they mention, mark their calendars for our August 3rd School Resource Fair at Osborne, where we are making big strides in trying to meet the, meet the basic needs of many of our children who need help and your participation in giving or receiving at this event is appropriate. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Hollingsworth?
I just want to welcome everyone, all the new hires and I thank all the presentations that we received today. Really appreciate all the work that this administration does. I hope you all know how much we appreciate you. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hollingsworth. Vice Chair Stevens?
Thank you. I wanted to correct an earlier statement concerning Fairfax County Public Schools grading policy. Dr. Reed was quoted in the Washington Post and the Washington Post in addition has a link to the new grading policy in Fairfax County for the 2024-2025 school year. If you click on the link, it takes you right to the alert page for Fairfax County Public Schools. Starting with the 2024-2025 school year, there will be several updates to Fairfax County Public Schools secondary grading and reporting policies. It says who they've worked with and it said, based on the work with all the different people who were worked with to develop, to develop their new grading policies, they will implement the following changes next year. They're going to use two uniform grading categories, summative and formative. Summit of assessments being worth 70% of the grade, formatives being worth 30% of the grade. They've updated the number of assignments and percentage per quarter. Reassessment, students will have at least, and they didn't put the number in, so it says at least opportunity to retake each summative assignment and earn it up to 100%. Earlier the school year, the grading scale, earlier the school year, the school board voted to adopt a single grading scale with FCPS. The scale is similar to the scale used in previous years with two main differences. One, they're going to establish a D-minus letter grade. And two, shifting of the numerical ranges for D, D-minus and F grades. The new ranges, A through C through D, are pretty much the same, but a D-minus is a 62 to 60% and an F is 59 to 50%. Those are the changes to the Fairfax County policy and it says right there that they will go into effect the 2024 school year. Otherwise, please, I don't know how much of summer vacation is over yet and I don't want to count how much it's over yet, but please take the time to enjoy. It's really hot outside. If you don't have cooling, your AC isn't working, there are several places you can spend the day. You can go to the Manassas City Public Library. You can go to Stonewall Park Pool to cool down. You can take a walk around the mall, Manassas Mall if you would like, but please find somewhere cool. If you're struggling to find somewhere cool, we can find people for you to reach out to who will help you find a place to stay as cool. So enjoy the rest of your summer vacation and we'll see you in two weeks.
Thank you, Vice Chair. And I will close out comments tonight with my own. Last night, last night here in this auditorium, I was trying to think if it was about the same time, but it was a little earlier in the night, Mayor Davis Younger thanked the school board for our recent joint meeting for being productive and efficient. I wanted to make sure you all heard that. At the meeting, the school board shared what our space needs were as we planned for the future. For details on those space needs, there's a presentation on board docs under the June 27th meeting. And we do have another joint meeting on Monday, July 15th at 8:00 a.m. for a mid-year legislative update from our Senator Rome and Delegate Maldonado. Speaking of joint meetings, in recent years, we traditionally only had two joint meetings a year. One in the late fall to discuss legislative priorities and one in the spring to present our budget. In an effort to, to improve communication and to build greater understanding of each other's priorities, we are meeting with city council together more often. Within the last year, we have had seven joint meetings. Monday we'll be with our legislators and that'll be eight. And I think that this is starting to help to address some of these hot topics and have some formal joint discussion about things that we're both working on. I would like to thank Mrs. Spall for sharing her- I would like to thank Mrs. Spall for sharing her thoughts at our retreat on communications and for your suggestions to help move us forward. Again, if you are a parent or community member and you have a particular interest or skill in offering to a Public Relations Communications Committee, please consider applying to participate on the committee by sending an email with a statement of interest to mrsgarza@agarza@mcpva.org. I want to thank the Policy Committee and specifically Mrs. Vice Chair Stevens for all your work on policy issues, including grading policy tonight. I know that took a lot of personal time, and I appreciate your research. Mrs. Spall's already reminded everybody about the Community Resource and Wellness Fair, Saturday, August 3rd. The doors open at 8 o'clock and there will be a line. So get there early if you can and continue having a great summer. Thanks, everybody.
Chair, I move that the School Board meeting adjourned.
Second.
I have a motion by Vice Chair Stevens, seconded by Mrs. Brooks, that the School Board meeting adjourned. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries 7-0. We are adjourned. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I was thinking about those and by fire. Yes, that was a long one. Oh, rolling on my bag. Oh, no. Which they turned off to not need, because it felt warm.